I'd like to call to order the City of Littleton City Council Virtual Regular Meeting for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. The time is 6:31 or 18:31. City Clerk, real call please.
Mayor Valdez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Millen.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Present.
Councilmember Elrod.
Councilmember Fay.
Here.
Councilmember Bro.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. We are just missing one member tonight, and that is Councilmember Elrod. All right. Samma, if you could, the, the assist, that Samma Fox, the Assistant to the City Manager, if you could please tell us how this meeting will proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, staff, citizens, and guests. I'm Samma Fox, Assistant to the City Manager, and I'll be serving as the moderator for this evening's virtual council meeting. We are streaming this meeting on cable channel eight, Facebook, and on our website, littletongov.org. Please be aware, comments left on Facebook Live will not be moderated and will not be included in this meeting minutes. Those wishing to participate in any public comment portion of the meeting are advised to view the meeting at littletongov.org via My Littleton and Littleton 8 TV. The broadcast, this broadcast has the least amount of delay. The agenda will be handled by Mayor Valdez in the same way it would be handled for a regular in-person meeting. As always, citizen participation is encouraged during public comment and public hearings. To participate via phone, please call 669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter the webinar ID 931-8577-3063. There will be two opportunities for citizen participation this evening. Once during public comment and again during ordinances on second reading and public hearings. If you wish to speak during either of these opportunities, please call in early and stay on the line. Again, the number is 669-900-6833. When prompted, enter the webinar ID 931-8577-3063. When public comment or the public hearing is announced, press star nine to raise your hand and be recognized as a speaker. Microphones will be muted for all citizens calling in. Citizens can press star nine to raise their hand and be recognized. Speakers will have three minutes to address council. The city clerk will announce when you have 30 seconds remaining and again when your time is up. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. For agenda items, Mayor Valdez will ask for a motion and a second, followed by discussion and a vote. Council will vote on agenda items using a thumbs up for a yes vote and a thumbs down for a no vote. The clerk will call each vote with all eyes and knees. And again, if you plan on participating during public comment or the public hearing, please call 669-900-6833. When prompted, use the webinar ID 931-8577-3063. Please stay on the line and press star nine to raise your hand and speak.
Great. Thank you, Samma Fox. And to be clear, sometimes there is discussion before motion is made. All right. Council, we have the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. We'll move down to our comments and reports. We'll begin with our city manager.
All right, Mayor, thank you very much. Good evening, Council. I just have one item here that I want to work with our city attorney, Reed Betsing. I'm gonna talk a little bit here about the governor's mask order as well as the Tri-County Health Order. So first, let's have Reed kind of give a summary of the two orders, and then I want to just talk about communication afterwards.
Thanks, Mark. Obviously, council knows that on July 8th, Tri-County Health Department issued their mask mandate. We had a study session last week where council had an opportunity to discuss whether or not to give direction to staff to prepare anything opting out. We were unable to reach a consensus on that, which was rendered relatively moot because two days later on the 16th of last week, the governor issued mandatory statewide mask orders for those persons that are in public places. Tri-County Health, there's a couple of differences right now. What Tri-County Health is going to be doing is amending their own order, but they're not going to be rescinding it. So there's two fundamental differences with Tri-County's order over the state's order. One of the fundamental differences is the length of time. So the Tri-County Health Department order is for 90 days, whereas the state's is currently at 30 days. Additionally, the Tri-County Health Department order covers outdoor spaces where social distancing would not be possible. So those are the two fundamental differences. There were some differences in ages of children in regard to who would be required. I believe Tri-County is going to go back to ages of children of 10 and over have to wear masks, whereas before they had said ages six and over. The other thing that came out today, Mark, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna leapfrog where you want to jump in on this, but the governor issued during his press conference today that alcohol sales are going to be cut off at 10 o'clock PM, and that order's effect is supposed to be effective this weekend. It hasn't come out yet. But so those restaurants that are serving, last call is going to be 10 PM. So that's all I have in, in terms of my updates. If you want to get into the Tri-County and the state health orders, Mark, we can talk about that.
All right. Thank you, Reed, for counseling for the public here. Just a couple of comments I want to add to that. Obviously, once again, we have a lot going on here with the public health orders. Myself and our mayor here, we sat in a meeting Friday morning with other mayors and city managers, plus the county commissioners for Rappahoe County, kind of discussed with Tri-County Health. We had a representative there, kind of the governor's order and what was likely to be coming out of Tri-County Health. I think the big theme, of course, was just communication. So how do we help our citizens, our businesses, understand kind of what is the requirement here for both inside and outside? So on Thursday morning, actually, I think it's in the afternoon, but Thursday afternoon, I have a meeting with other city managers throughout the county, along with county staff, and we're going to talk about that very issue. Tri-County Health is pretty sensitive to that, so they're wanting to work with us. So I think shortly after that meeting, hopefully, we'll have kind of a coordinated effort here to communicate throughout the county with all our citizens in Littleton as well as our businesses. So I think that's the update at this point. I think we're trying to do our best to stay on top of that. Obviously, this is a pretty significant development here in the last few days. So Reed, that's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you very much. And to be clear, the City of Littleton is following the governor's order as well as Tri-County's orders. So we're, we're not opting out. We are staying in, and we're following both, and there are slight differences, as, as the city attorney had mentioned. Uh, city attorney?
I, I would just say that right now, we're following the state's order because Tri-County's does not actually kick in until Friday. But then on Friday, we'll be following Tri-County's order. It's a little bit more restrictive, so that's why they're allowed to do what they're doing.
Great. Thank you. Any other report?
No, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll move on to council members in alphabetical order, and we'll, Councilmember Driscoll.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Fay.
I would like to report on the Tri-City's homelessness policy group. We have continued to interview homeless people. I've been going to the Graceful Cafe, oh, two to three mornings a week at 7:00 AM to talk, to interview homeless folks. And we, we're asking questions such as, where did you sleep last night? And what keeps you from being housed? And so we're hoping that questions that will lead to us as three cities to be able to understand our homeless population more and, and thus do right by them while having them be less intrusive on the rest of, so we get fewer complaints from people. And I want to show you, if I can do my screen share, a picture of one of the fellows who I interviewed. Oops. I bet that didn't come up right. I, I, I won't take any more time trying to do that. Second thing I want to talk about is Highline Canal, of course. There is a new Walk the Canal, Walk for the Canal, and it's a get pledges and get prizes promotion. There are 71 miles to the canal, as you probably know, and it goes 71 days from August 1st to August 10th. And the idea is that anyone goes to the website, highlightingcanal.org/walk, and you sign up for the distance that you want to go, and then you get moving. So the Highline Canal Conservancy is encouraging people to walk or run or ride or skip or roll, however people get around, put in the goal, and then go ahead and do it on, on its own. Still distancing, of course, but get out there and move and that just, that's all.
Thank you very much. We'll go to Councilmember Grove.
I wanted to ask for citizen feedback on our new building code, as many of you that might be watching know we're in the process of updating that. And if you want input in how Main Street's going to look, how the surrounding area is going to look, it's really important that you provide feedback. If you want to maintain our small-town look and feel, this is the tool. Let us know. All the feedback will be due by the end of the month, and all you need to do is go to envisionlittleton.org. There's a ULUC tab, and then you'll find all the pages, the maps, and the comment feedback form. Now, I have to say, the feedback form is a little bit long, and the code is a little bit detailed, but you don't have to fill in every question. You can press on the survey without filling in everything. So if you want to select topics, the topics that are, that we're asking questions on include things like district characteristics, building height, number of stories, parking requirements for the building, parking requirements for parking lots, trees, green states, signage. There's a lot of questions on how a building should look, including mass, scale, location on the lot, lot coverage, how the roofs look, whether they're sloped or whether they're fat, flat, and there's a lot of places just for comments. And one workaround, so you don't have to sit there and fill out the form and read the code all at once, is you can print out the form with a paper copy, read a little bit of the code, or pick and choose whatever you want, answer the questions, and then with your filled-out form, then get online, do it all at once, and submit it. So that might be helpful. Another option is office hours. So if you go to that ULUC tab on envision.org, you can make an appointment and either ask questions or get feedback to staff, and then you can do it that way if that's more comfortable than doing it online. This code update will dictate how our downtown looks in the future, and it's important that we be sure we are, have thoughtful growth to maintain the charm and unique character of our city. Second thing is, as you will see on the agenda about the Next Gen Advisory Committee, we have five new members, so now we're going to be full. Two of those members are students, so that's exciting to get people from that demographic. And that's it, Jerry.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see, Councilmember Milliman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. A couple things. One is the library museum opened. They had their grand reopening. The museum saw 531 visitors in only 20 hours that it was open that week, which is pretty impressive. Apparently, the new reservation system for the timed entry is working very well. So if you get a chance, please go see, there's a couple things you can go see at the museum, the Perspectives exhibit and the Fine Arts Gallery. There's the revamped The Way We Played exhibit in the Changing Gallery, and then, of course, the 12 new baby lambs that are in the 1860s Living Farm. With the library, this is pretty impressive, for a week that it was only open for 24 hours collectively, they had 1,842 patron visits, 3,675 checked-out items. The curbside service is still up and running, and I'm happy to report visitors to both facilities. We're very accepting and respectful of the new rules and procedures with regards to social distancing and wearing masks. There was no riots or fights or anything. Everybody was, everybody was there to have a great time and to protect each other. The other thing is the Littleton Memorial Rose Garden, which is just west of Stern Park, apparently is in full bloom. It is in full bloom. So if you need to re-center, rebalance, take a little bit of time and space for yourself, then I recommend that you go take a nice walk, maybe with your new dog, your new puppy, your family, and go spend a little bit of time in the rose garden. Smell the roses, love life. And then, Carol, I did actually sign up for that Highline Canal Walk today. It starts August 1st. I'm going to try to do the whole 71 miles from Waterton Canyon all the way out east. And this is a really important fundraiser because their annual fundraiser had to be canceled, obviously, for COVID. And so I think everybody should get out there. It's great exercise, supporting our Highline Canal and our city, which is had a lot of history, and especially as the weather starts to get a little cooler and the leaves start to change, it'll be a really, a nice thing to do. And also, I'll just push again for the census. If you haven't filled out the census, please, please, please complete your census. It's super important for the City of Littleton, and that's it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Mayor Pro Tem Millen.
No report from me tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. I got a couple items. I just remind everybody, we will be using the raise the hand icon when we get to the questions portion of our meeting. Oh, so let's see, Thursday, this coming Thursday, that's the 23rd, 8:00, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, we are having our annual joint meeting with the City of Inglewood. And this is the, and the subject, of course, is the Littleton Inglewood Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is doing business now, as I understand, as the South Platte Renew. So that's Thursday, and I know some of you can't make it, but it's a definitely meeting. If you can, try to make it. All members did receive an email from, from Peter. So check your emails, and you'll have the present, the agenda and the presentation there. Also, Colleen, if you would, could you tell us how the public will be able to view that meeting Thursday?
Yes, Mayor. On our website calendar, as with any other city council meeting, there is an agenda posted. I just posted it with links to the City of Inglewood's website for the agenda and meeting documents, as well as a link to the YouTube video that will be available after the meeting or to watch live during the meeting. And that is posted on our website on the calendar for the morning of July 23rd.
Great. Thank you very much. And also, as was just mentioned, the census, if you haven't filled it out, please do so soon. And for council, immediately after this meeting, we do have a study session. So we're not going to wave real quickly here. All right. We're going to move on to our citizens' appearance, a part of the agenda of which we have done. So we're going to move on to the public comment. So I'm going to hand it over to, and see, right now, it is, it is 6:00, 6:50 PM. And Samma, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If you wish to address the City Council under public comment, please call 669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter the webinar ID 931-8577-3063. Press star nine to be recognized. Citizen microphones will be automatically muted until the citizen is called upon to speak by the last three digits of their phone number. Please state your name and district or address clearly for the record. A reminder, the city clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining, and again when your time is up. Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not part of the public hearings on tonight's agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The city clerk will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining, and again when your time is up. The city council is not authorized by the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The mayor may refer the matter to the city manager and/or city attorney for immediate comment after public comment, or to staff to obtain additional information and report back to the council as appropriate. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Mayor, we currently have one participant in the queue. I'd like to remind any callers to press star nine now if you'd like to have your hand raised. The first caller we have is at 493. Caller 493, you have been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record and begin speaking.
Good evening. I'm Frank Atwood, and I live in District Four. Friday, this Friday morning, I'll be hosting a discussion of Littleton's future, and all are invited. Please call me at 720-260-1493 for details. I am frightened that no one, I repeat, no one, took me up on my proposed bet that our beautiful, small-town, mid-century modern character on Littleton Boulevard would be destroyed by another monstrosity equivalent to the Grove/Vita. I was hoping that historic Littleton, Inc., would provide me evidence that our town was safe. The purpose of the proposed bet is to begin a civil discussion of how the Grove of Vita occurred, and can another monstrosity be prevented? Earlier this year, I was hoping the alumni of the Littleton Leadership Academy would take on this challenge and focus on this calamity and incorporate corrective regulations into zoning. Instead, I've heard silence. I assume there is no corrective action, and instead, I see subtle changes to make Geneva Village into the next mixed-use and mini-Grove Vita. I hear our out-of-town, downtown property owners have ambitions of increasing their profits overnight by raising the building height in downtown Littleton. Maybe Joni Mitchell was lucky to have parking lots instead of urban canyons profiting out-of-city property owners. I hope the property values in Littleton increase, but I am opposed to it increasing overnight, which happens when building height regulations are changed abruptly. I expect the District One Council member to lobby for this. I'm not surprised that he's received campaign contributions. I am surprised I hear so much silent consent from the rest of the city's council members. Yes, have a meal at Maine and Prince and enjoy the character and ambience of small-town Littleton, then walk behind the movie set facade, and you witness developers successfully pushing the envelope and turning downtown Littleton into dark urban canyons comparable to the Gunnison. In summary, do join me to discuss character of Littleton, call 720-260-1493 for details. Show faith in, second, show faith in Littleton's small-town character and bet me $50.
30 seconds.
And third, let's make a side bet of where the next character-destroying monstrosity will go. Sincerely, Frank Atwood, 720-260-1493. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Samma, do we have any other callers?
Yes, Mayor, we have two other callers. Caller 589, you are next. Caller 589, you have been unmuted.
Hello, my name is Jeannie Erickson, and I live in District One. At your study session regarding land use in downtown Littleton a few weeks ago, I heard you discuss the possibility of rezoning the property north of Berry Street in downtown. This would include our beloved and historic Geneva Village senior housing, the lodge and the beautiful park, all located on city-owned property. Changing the zoning on this property to possibly allow Geneva Village to be scraped and a developer build who knows what on this property would be devastating not only to the seniors living there, but also to those that value the history of Littleton. In the four years from 2009 to 2013, the City of Littleton needed money and... In the four years from 2009 to 2013, the city of Littleton needed money in borrow a total of $630,220 from the self-sustaining Geneva Village Enterprise Fund. And they put it in their general fund. A total of $275,000 of that was paid back in 2016 and 17, leaving a total of $355,220 currently owed by the city to the Geneva Village Enterprise Fund. This senior village has always been self-sustaining, and the city still owes them $355,220. This land is owned by the city, which means it belongs to the taxpayers of Littleton. And I highly doubt that the citizens want this historic piece of Littleton developed corner to corner with some sort of high-rise. If we wanted to live around high-rises, we would live in Denver, not Littleton. Please do not use this pandemic as an excuse to justify and the possible sale of Geneva Village, because we need the money. That would be just pure greed and disgraceful to our seniors. Since we cannot have large, interactive group meetings to talk about these land use changes because of the pandemic, we, the people, are being left out of group interactive conversations. Let's continue to show our seniors in Littleton respect and let them have a beautiful area to live out their golden years. We are counting on you, our elected city council members, to vote for what the citizens want. And if it is saving our historical landmarks for future generations to enjoy, please listen to the voices of the people. We, it would be a disgrace to lose any part of this historic area of Littleton. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Jeannie. Uh, the next caller, please.
Thank you. Caller 819 is next. Caller 819, you have been unmuted.
Hi, Council, this is Pam Chadbourne. I live in District One and in downtown. Um, first, let me compliment and actually express my awe at the first two public speakers. Um, awesome comments, and Council, I beg you to, uh, listen to what they're asking for. They're right. And what's happening in the city propositions is wrong for Littleton. Um, I wanted to first say what happened with masks at the study session I was disappointed in. Um, the two people who actually spoke for not wearing masks um, are also people who set up a separate, I'm sure, city-funded website for RISE to support businesses in Littleton through the pandemic. And the best way to support businesses is to wear masks. It is not an issue of freedom. It is supporting businesses and the people so that we can get back to, um, some kind of economic health and normal society. Wear masks for your business successes. Don't tie yourself up in some kind of, um, silly entitlement to something about wearing, not wearing masks is freedom. That's false. Um, second of all, I was disappointed in the short-term rental discussion, and I want to bring up stuff about fairness and equality. Uh, Council, the guiding principles for this are just missing in your discussions, and you've got to get back to first principles. Um, then, do you understand that short-term rentals are like Uber and Lyft? They destroy the wage and benefit structure for the workers and transfer that to the public realm. It is foolish for the city to support short-term rentals, uh, to a large degree. It would destroy the character of the city. Um, and it's unfair to the neighbors. Look, hotels and motels have this business. They have conducted it for a long time. Short-term rentals should have the same rules as motels and hotels for parity in the business realm. Um, the last thing you want is all the nice work guys to go to the hotel, women, go to the hotels and motels and have, uh, large party groups come to the houses in the midst of our communities. That's an incompatible use next door. And this goes into the land use code. The land use code being proposed is outrageous. Over and over, people told you that they liked the character of Littleton now, and that was constructed with a land use code that paid great attention to compatible adjacent uses. STRs are not a compatible adjacent use in a residential district. Um, and the land use code being proposed with the four stories next to regular houses now, they're a huge change, and they destroy the historic character of the downtown. Um, yeah, wrong, wrong direction, Council. Please stop what's going on.
Thank you very much. Samma, any other callers?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no other callers.
No other callers. It is 8:01 PM, and I'm going to close the public comment, move into our consent agenda. Okay, we have consent agenda item 6A. ID number 20-176, motion to approve appointments to the Next Generation Advisory Committee. Item 6B, approval, ID number 20-174, approval of the July 7, 2020 virtual regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Thank you. All right. Uh, who was that second?
Pam.
Uh, uh, Councilmember Grove was the second. All right. If there's no more discussion. All right. So a thumbs up will be an approve and a thumbs down will be not to approve. So ready, Council? Vote.
The vote is six. The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, we have no general business items tonight. So we will move down to our, our ordinances on second reading. And we do have one item, but before we begin, Samma, if you could once again remind our callers how they can participate.
Thank you, Mayor. Citizens wishing to speak during the public hearing tonight should please call 669-900-6833. When prompted, enter the webinar ID 931-8577-3063. Press star nine to raise your hand and be recognized. After the staff presentation, you will be recognized by the last three digits of your phone number. Speakers will have three minutes to address council on the public hearing topic. Mayor?
Great. Thank you very much. So Council, tonight we have item 8A. That's an ordinance 24-2020, an ordinance on second reading, amending, amending Title X, Chapter Six, Section 4B, one of the municipal code in order to reference the most recent Federal Emergency Management Agency Flood Insurance Study and flood insurance rate map. That's all one sentence. So I'll turn it over to the city manager.
All right, Mayor. Thank you. And again, good evening, Council. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce Carolyn Rowan. She's our Water Resource Manager within the Public Works Department. We've had a couple of briefings with Council here at study sessions, and this evening is the public hearing for the changes. So with that, Carolyn?
All right. Good evening, Council in residence. Um, I'm presenting to, my name is Carolyn Rowan. I'm the Water Resources Manager, and part of what I do here at the city is act as the floodplain administrator. Can you all see my screen all right?
Not yet.
Let me know.
Yes, I see it.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm going to present ordinance 24-2020. This is revise, revising the floodplain code to reference the most current FEMA, um, studies. Uh, the reason for this code update is that the National Flood Insurance Program requires communities to adopt most current, uh, FEMA studies as they are revised. Our floodplain regulations reference this FEMA study by its date. And so this ordinance proposes to update that date reference to September 4th, 2020. This is the effective date of this most recent study. And we received a letter from FEMA of this requirement, um, on March 4th. Again, the require, the requirement being to adopt the most current FEMA study to remain in good standing in the NFIP. Uh, the location of this r- report reference is entitled 10, Chapter Six, Section 4B, one. Uh, this is what the section is after the most recent floodplain regulations update that we did a few weeks ago. Um, however, that update is not yet on our website. So the, the place where it currently is located in the older code is 1063B. A little snapshot of it is located at the bottom of the screen there. It's currently referencing December 17th, 2010. So how does this affect Littleton? Uh, this particular FEMA insurance study and rate map incorporates changes in eight different floodplains in the metro area, and it includes Little's Creek, which runs through Littleton. Uh, the, the changes that are reflected in this FEMA study actually have already been adopted locally by the Mile High Flood District, Colorado Water Conservation Board, and City Council in, uh, between 2012 and 2013. However, with FEMA finally adopting this most recent change, it now will affect flood insurance within the city. Uh, the Little's Creek floodplain changes, um, are both increases and decreases in flood elevation and changes in shape and width all along the creek corridor. And some homes, as a result of this change, will be required to pay flood insurance now, um, if they have a mortgage. And the reverse of that is that there will be some homes also that no longer are, have to pay mandatory flood insurance, because some of the, some properties will no longer be shown in floodplain. One area in particular I wanted to highlight, um, there's cha, as I mentioned, there's changes in width and shape all along the whole corridor. One particular area where there is a number of homes that are now going to be shown within the floodplain is just to the south and east of the Gallup and Peak View intersection. Um, an enlargement of that is on the right of your screen in blue. Uh, there's at least four, probably five, uh, properties in there that, uh, will now be within that FEMA 100-year floodplain and be required to carry insurance if they have a mortgage. As far as the public notice process on this, outreach began in late 2016 and early 2017 uh, via letters from the Mile High Flood District, uh, at the time that was Urban Drainage and Flood Control District. And we had a public meeting in Littleton in January 2017. Uh, there was notices in the Federal Register and the Littleton Independent of these changes. And there's been some subsequent staff and resident communications, uh, regarding the changes. The most vocal folks are those people who, um, are no longer going to have to pay flood insurance. They keep, kept calling and asking when the FEMA update would become effective. There was a number of delays for various reasons. And then, uh, lastly, very recently, Mile High Flood District sent out another letter in July 2nd to all affected residents if they were remaining in the floodplain or they were going to be introduced into the floodplain mapping. Uh, they got a letter from the district just emphasizing that the FEMA update was finally going to be effective and that it may affect their flood insurance. So the staff recommendation is, of course, to, uh, maintain our good standing in, in the NFIP. We recommend that city council approve ordinance 24-2020 to update that di, that date reference in, uh, the floodplain code. And that's all I have tonight, and I'm happy to take any questions that folks have.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you, Council. Uh, we're going to go ahead. We'll go into questions. Uh, go ahead and hit the, the hand icon if you have any questions. I'm looking. It looks, I, I have one question, and that is, have the property owners all been notified of the new requirement for the flood insurance?
Yes, Mayor. It's my understanding that all residents and property owners that are affected, um, have received multiple letters over the years, whether it be from the initial outreach efforts or the most recent outreach by Mile High Flood District.
All right. Well, this is a public meeting, so I'm going to go ahead and, uh, turn it over, uh, to Samma, uh, for our callers, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So a reminder to citizens wishing to speak during public hearing tonight. If you've not already joined our queue, please call 669-900-6833. When prompted, enter the webinar ID 931-8577-3063. Please stay on the line and press star nine to raise your hand and be recognized. If you are in the queue now, please go ahead and press star nine. Mayor?
Great. Do we have any callers?
We have no one who's raised their hand at the moment. Just want to have another reminder out there to press star nine if you'd like to join. I know we have a delay on some of our watching formats.
All right. And so I opened it up, the public comments up at 7:10. So, so we still have no comments?
We still have no comments. Final reminder, if you're listening in the queue, please go ahead and press star nine if you'd like to make public comment.
All right. We'll go ahead and we'll close the public comments at, uh, 7:01 PM. Uh, Council, uh, any questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
To approve ordinance 24-2020 on second reading.
Second. We have a motion, a second, by, uh, Councilmember Drisco. If there is no other comments, let's go ahead and take it to a vote. A yes vote will be to accept the motion, uh, and no is a thumbs down would be, uh, to oppose. Thumbs up, thumbs down.
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much. That is our last item on our agenda tonight. We are going to move into our study section, session, and also just a reminder that we do have, next week, we have another meeting. That's July 28th, which is a study session. So, uh, we're going to move right in, right into our study session. And, uh, the time now, well, uh, this is the, I'm going to open up the City of Littleton City Council Virtual Study Session Meeting. The time now, it, it, what is Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. The time now is, uh, 7:12 PM. And we have two items on our agenda tonight, and our first item is going to be ID number, uh, 1A, ID number 20-171. It's an update for Housing Task Force, from the Housing Task Force. Now, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Council. So the, one of the issues that came out of the city's adopted comprehensive plan was a recognition here that we need to engage a deeper into affordable housing. And with that, uh, we had a housing task force, uh, that was recommended in that comp plan. So tonight, we have an update here from Corey Ritz, the Executive Director for South Metro Housing Options, and to report on some of the work that we, they have been doing here for the past, uh, few months. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Corey.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I think I might need help getting my video started.
What, what kind of help you need there?
There we go. All right. Let me get my PowerPoint pulled up here and we'll get started. Is that looking good?
I, I don't see the video yet. Does anybody else?
Not yet.
There we go, Corey.
You good?
Yes.
All right. Oh, thank you all for, uh, giving us this opportunity to, to talk with you tonight. Know your schedules are definitely very busy these days, so we appreciate the time. Um, we just have a short presentation and, uh, so we can have some questions, some time for questions and conversation around the housing needs in Littleton. But overall, our overarching goal, the task force, is really to do a lot of the heavy lifting related to the housing issues in Littleton. Um, as you all and city staff have plenty on your plates right now and over the next couple of years. So we intend to use the comp plan and housing study as our guide, and, uh, our group will work with council, staff, planning commission to address the housing needs in Littleton. We currently have 11 total members on the task force. Um, we have a strong group of professionals with housing, real estate development experience. But, um, just as importantly, we have people on the task force to bring some different perspectives other than housing, which we think is important. Um, many of the members have dual roles, and by that I mean that in addition to their work on the task force, um, they also are residents of Littleton, which we think is also a perspective that's very important. um, they also are, are residents of Littleton, which we think is also a perspective that's very important. Uh, currently meeting on a reg- on a monthly basis, but it's pretty fluid right now. Um, as you all know, short amount of time to get a lot of things done in terms of the land use code. So that's um, so that's where we're at in terms of our meetings. In regards to our work plan, uh, again, as you all very well know, right now, the land use code is, work is front and center. So that's the most, one of the most important uh issues we're working on right now. Trying to collaborate with city council, city staff um on, on the land use code and following the guidelines set out in both the comp plan and the housing study. Um, we're also looking at a housing study data refresh. So we've contracted with Molly Fitzpatrick, who is the lead on the initial Littleton Housing Study in two thousand seventeen to complete the data refresh of certain metrics presented back in two thousand seventeen and eighteen. Um, since the study was a few years ago, the data already is getting relatively old. And uh, we thought it'd be interesting and important to see um what the update on some of those key data points looks like. Um, to see where, where those numbers are today. Uh, we expect to have the new data around the first week of August. And I've asked Molly, she's agreed, um, if you are interested, she's agreed to present her findings and the new data to city council and staff when she has the refresh completed. So hopefully we can get that on your calendars as well when the project is complete. Um, some of the other short-term action items that were identified in both the housing study and comp plan that we'll be working on. Uh, one is inventorying vacant lands in the city, um, that could possibly be used for affordable housing. And also looking at um underutilized land in the city. Um, another short-term action item that was identified that we um are, I, are, we think are, it would be very important to undertake is the public engagement to improve the understanding and perception of the low-income housing tax credit program. Uh, which is the primary way in, in which affordable housing is built um these days. So I would actually expand that to include education and engagement around affordable housing in general. As a lot of people still have um a lot of misconceptions about what affordable housing really means and what it's all about. Uh, the term alone can trip people up sometimes, whether we call it workforce housing or attainable housing, the goal is the same, which um is to provide housing that people can afford, which in Littleton is, can be very challenging for sure. So when we say affordable housing in Littleton, the range i- it's not about low income, the range is very large one. Starting on the low end could be twenty-five thousand dollars a year or less of what household is earning. But um, again, the way housing costs have increased, affordable housing can also mean um what a, what a household can, can afford earning upwards of a hundred thousand per year. So um, I think public engagement around, around that topic um and around the impact of affordable housing in general on the community. Things like economic development, um, education, health and wellness, traffic, transportation, all of these areas that are directly impacted by the lack of affordable housing. Um, those are some conversations that we think will be very helpful as we move forward. Uh, just to recap a little bit of the timeline uh of this process, the city council commission, the, the Littleton Housing Task Force, it was completed in two thousand seventeen. Um, two thousand eighteen recommendations from the housing study were presented to council and adopted by council. Um, then as you very well know, uh, with all the work on the comp plan last year, the, the adoption of the comp plan happened at the end of last year, which included chapters on housing in neighborhoods and land use and community character. So there's been a, a very consistent and steady progression, beginning with the housing study that placed a lot of focus on the housing landscape in Littleton and, and identified some of the housing needs of the community. So there were several core needs um that were identified in the housing study in two thousand seventeen. One of them was affordable rent rental units for residents earning less than twenty-five thousand dollars and showed a shortage of around thirteen hundred units. Um, for some context, a full-time job at minimum wage would earn around that twenty-five thousand dollars uh per year. Also, folks that are on fixed incomes would fit into this category. Um, thi- this number is pretty worrisome and because this information was from several years ago. Housing costs have continued to increase over the last few years while wages um have not kept up. So it's, it will be interesting to, to get the data refresh and, and find out where those updated numbers um come out. Um, starter and family homes also identified as a need in that original housing study. Traditional starter homes don't necessarily exist right now in Littleton in terms of price points that are affordable for a lot of families um looking to purchase their first home. So uh, we certainly don't want to lose young families because they're priced out of Littleton and have to move somewhere else where they can afford their, their first time starter home. Um, the third need that was identified was uh housing for seniors. So that is including housing that gives seniors the ability to downsize um as they age, if they, if they so choose, so they can uh more easily age in place. And there's also the affordability component for seniors, for those seniors who are on a fixed income, who may not have retirement income necessary to afford something in Littleton. So the affordable housing gap in Littleton in general has become pretty clear at this point. Uh, forty-seven percent of renters in Littleton pay thirty percent or more of their income on housing. So when that happens, we refer to that as housing cost burdened. Um, that amounts to about thirty-eight hundred households. So thirty-eight hundred households in Littleton are paying more on their income than, than we would like to see. Um, and then twenty-one and a half percent of homeowners are also in that same category, paying thirty percent or more of their income on, on housing. That was another twenty-five, over twenty-five hundred households. And if, once people get to the fifty percent threshold, so if they're paying fifty percent or more of their income on housing, then they're considered extremely cost burdened. Um, and we have twenty percent of renters in Littleton that are paying more than fifty, fifty percent or more and eight percent of homeowners. And if you're wondering at this point or asking yourself why that really matters, um, for one, it demonstrates the, the need for affordable housing in Littleton. But the consequence of people paying the higher percentage of their income on housing is it, it leaves less money for households to spend in other areas that would help support the community. So it means they, they don't have the disposable income to spend it on other, other items that would help benefit the community, whether it's restaurants, restaurants, bars, shopping, what have you. And the comprehensive plan, um, one of the specific items that, that was pointed out in the comp plan, uh sixty-five hundred and fifty additional units may be needed over the next twenty years. So this number is certainly a projection, it could be right on, could be less, could be more. Um, to me, this number is a bit daunting. We're, that would uh mean we would need to add three hundred units per year based on the fact that we're already behind thirteen hundred and fifty units um in Littleton just for people making twenty-five thousand dollars a year or less. Um, and if we add in the number of current residents paying over thirty percent or over fifty percent of their income on housing, it becomes a, a, a very difficult and challenging situation to say the least. Um, some of the other key issues listed in the comp plan that tie into what we've been talking about and what we'll be looking at as a task force, housing options, multiple options for people and diversity of housing options, the cost of housing in Littleton, whether it be rentals or for sale. And then making sure we have housing for people in all the different stages in their lives. The housing goal number one, the quantity and uh diversity of housing options. Now, this I think is a very important one and right now, especially in the conversations about the downtown area. It comes to mind um as being the focus of the land use code. Um, the lower density in downtown area does not allow for, for the quantity and diversity of housing options identified in the comp plan. Based on the number of units that we already need, um, plus the units we'll need in the future. Uh, I, I don't think that we can turn our backs on any area of Littleton when it comes to some potential housing options. So as long as we, we do, um, we build properties that are, are done really well and blending in with the character of existing buildings and certainly won't solve our pro- our housing problem, but any housing we can add to, to Littleton the better, especially when it comes to affordable housing. Um, and speaking of the downtown area, just having the opportunity to build housing near transportation, near our vibrant main street and employ so many people from bars, restaurants, shops that that walk to work, reduce traffic, et cetera. Um, something we certainly will be looking at more closely as we finish this process with the downtown land use. And another thing I think is important that, you know, keeps popping up and what the um task force will be working on is inclusivity. Um, inclusivity was identified as one of the top five core values for the city in the comp plan. Um, the input in, in that core value is that Littleton needs a range and mix of housing choice. Core value being inclusive and guiding principle of the, so um, I think that's very important. I, I've heard that a lot over the last few years about how inclusive Littleton is, um, which certainly applies to then the housing landscape and what that looks like. So as we uh think about housing in Littleton, regardless of what particular area of the city we're discussing, I think we certainly need to keep inclusivity at the front of, of our minds. As it was identified as one of the five core values of the city in the comp plan. So. So that's all we have in terms of presentation. I wanna have some time to, um, I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce Yvonne and I. He is our Director of Real Estate at SMHL. So he's on the call as well. Um, if you all have any questions, conversation, we're happy to, to do so.
Great. Thank you very much, Corey. Uh, Yvonne, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, not at the moment. I'm, I'm really here for backup uh in case our questions to, to help Corey answer.
Great. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead into council questions and we'll start with council member Fay.
Yeah, Corey, thanks for the presentation. Uh, I know that, that these are not new questions, but I want to bring them out as a follow-up to your presentation. What does it do for our established residents? People who have lived here thirty years or twenty years who have really nice established houses and yards and backyards and all of that? What does it do for them to have affordable housing? What, why even do it? I'm not speaking for myself, I'm speaking broadly here, please hear it that way.
Right, well, I mean, affordable housing impacts the community in so many different ways. Um, if we're talking about kids and their education, stable housing is a key indicator in how well they do. If, if they move around a lot, they don't have stable housing, they don't do as well in school. Um, businesses, it definitely impacts businesses and we can speak to that. As running a business, I know we struggle with, um, especially Libby Bortz is a good example, you know, our assisted living center. When folks can't, employees can't afford to live near where they work, especially if they're lower paying jobs, they can certainly find a job that pays similar, much closer to their work. Um, which makes it really challenging to run a business if you're constantly turning over employees and, you know, retaining and um attracting good employees can be very challenging. Um, I think that the diversity piece that I spoke about is also super important when it comes to the character of Littleton, you know, again, I've heard that that term brought up a lot in, in conversations with people to how proud Littleton is of being an inclusive community. Um, if we designate only certain areas of town for affordable housing or, you know, we're, I just, I think we, we lose that, that inclusivity, then it just doesn't feel like we're, um, we're helping the community in that way if, if we end up.
It, it sounds like you're saying that because Littleton needs employees that typically don't get paid a lot, like you're, you said Libby Bortz. And I would add on to that restaurants and um some retail that we need to have housing for those people that our local business needs.
Absolutely. That was in the housing study, in the housing study, that was one of the main things that came out, that the top jobs, or at least some of the top jobs in Littleton are exactly those, those positions that don't pay as well, retail, restaurant, healthcare, some healthcare, not all healthcare, but some healthcare.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll go to council member Drisco.
Yes, Corey, thank you. Um, Corey, two things. I don't know if people understand the relationship between South Metro Housing and Littleton. If you couldn't just take a second or two, explain that. And also, um, last year, South Metro Housing was selling, I forget the exact number of properties. Uh, if you could give us an update on that, um, and, and why considering we do, you know, there's somewhat of a shortage of affordable housing, why South Metro decided to uh decide to sell some of their properties?
Sure. So um, South Metro Housing Options is the Littleton Housing Authority. So we're the Littleton Housing Authority doing business as South Metro Housing Options. Um, we've been around since nineteen seventy-one and, you know, this is kind of, I think, um pertinent to the diver- or the inclusive conversation because we were um established and formed because of that exact thing, to make sure that we had housing in Littleton to serve everyone. So, um, we've been, been around for a long time, not a lot of people still know about us.
But you don't report to city council, correct?
Our board members are appointed by city council. So we have, yeah, seven person, uh, seven-member board that's appointed by city. And in terms of our public housing, our scattered sites that you're referring to, um, that process is to, um, it's still, nothing is finalized yet and we have not been approved as of today. Um, but the, the idea that, you know, one of the primary reasons for that, um, for one, that program, the public housing program has been underfunded for so many years that um, it, it certainly is a challenge for, to operate those sites. But also being able to, you know, use proceeds from the, the sale of those sites um to produce more housing in Littleton i- is something we feel is very important. Um, and just to be clear, current residents in those properties receive a tenant protection voucher, so, which is similar to housing choice voucher. They're not being uh displaced, we will be working with them throughout the whole process. Moving costs, help in finding um a new place, all, everything they'll need to get through the process. That hasn't started. Yvonne, I'm sure you.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Patrick, responding directly to your question about the sale of the homes. There's fifty-nine homes that we are um considering uh selling and they will be done in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. And so the, uh, you know, as Corey mentioned, our, our hope is to um produce proceeds that we, from, from the sale of the homes that we can use to either acquire or develop uh additional affordable housing. But at the same time, we're responding to uh city council, uh, uh, city council adopted recommendations um that, that are, you know, that, that um point directly at a gap that was shown in the housing study that, that is essentially um, you know, a- around starter homes and m- middle income uh affordable homes, right? And so uh we will be selling those, those homes at a max eighty percent area meaning income equivalent sale price.
Good. Council, any other questions? I do have a question, Corey. So uh, you're not limited to just the city of Littleton, correct?
In terms of, it depends on, it depends on what I guess the activity is. So um, a lot of, we certainly partner with other housing authorities, you know, depending on where in the jurisdiction it is. But we also, we do work in unincorporated Arapahoe County.
Yeah, what about the city of Centennial? Or, or does your authority stop right there at the border?
Again, it, it really, I think, would depend on what the activity was, so we can help them administer programs, um, if, and, and partner with them.
So are you saying you only, that right now are only administering in the city of Littleton?
And we administer vouchers in, in um unincorporated Arapahoe County as well.
Unincorpor- but not Centennial or Highlands Ranch or Jefferson County?
No. Now, if we were to go in and do anything in those jurisdictions, we would work with those local housing authorities or housing agencies.
And, and Centennial has a housing authority already?
They do not.
They do not. Have you, are you working with Centennial uh at all to, to help them?
Um, they've reached out, we had one call to see if we had um essentially, I, I think they were looking for more immediate programs to help with, with affordable housing, um, which we do not at this point.
Okay. And then, and then as far as the, the cares money, that's the money from the COVID virus that the, the being distributed has uh, Chaffa, I know Chaffa has money that they're gonna distribute. Did you get a chance to talk to them about rental assistance or some help?
Yeah, I don't, so from what I can find out, I don't think, I don't know if they're administering the money themselves, but I haven't been able, I've talked with some colleagues, I haven't been able to. I haven't been able to run down any monies that will be available through them. Um I wouldn't be surprised for sure if they do some some type of mortgage assistance. But at this point, most of the rental assist assistance is coming through the state, through the Division of Housing. So they have um one fund for housing authorities only, but they have a second fund. This just came out last week. Um and it added a a separate pot of money for private landlords as well. So um so really, most of the money is from from what we know in terms of CARES Act, the rental assistance either comes from uh DOH or from the from Arapahoe County. They also have community services block grant money available, and I think soon we'll be getting CDBG money as well.
So our residents should contact you if they need rental assistance help at this point, emergency help?
Yes, or and we're going, we're we'll probably this week for sure get up on our website, um the information, the contact information for DOH. Um because ultimately they'll go through DOH to apply for a lot of that assistance. If they're a resident of ours, um we'll work with them. But if they're they're not, then we would um we would ask them to work with the Division of Housing.
All right. So so right now you're limited to only the residents you currently have then?
Right. Yeah, the county, yeah. We also refer people to the county. Um Arapahoe County has their rental assistance program that people can go to.
All right. Thank you. Ca- Counsel, any other questions?
Uh question, Jerry. I raise my hand or what are we doing?
Okay, uh Councilmember Grove.
Um actually, I have two. Uh one's a quick question. You talk about paying more than thirty percent of your income on housing. Is that thirty percent of your gross income before taxes or disposable?
Gross, yeah. And that real, I don't know the exact number, you know, it's a it's a good gauge of, you know, what people money on, just to be clear, because I know sometimes that can be confusing. It's not a hard, hard and fast number, but it's a good gauge.
So it's just your uh total income before taxes?
Right.
Um my my real question is, what is the, what do you expect the lag time between selling these fifty-nine properties and getting housing built if that's the option or? I mean, I I would think you would place people right away, and I don't know where they would be placed, and getting housing built. Seems to me that could be quite a gap in time.
Yeah, so the proceeds of uh um the proceeds will be used both uh for acquisition uh to preserve affordable housing as well as um ground up development. And so Pam, I think what you what you're, what you are pointing to is the the uh development process and it it can take us, you know, two to four years to uh get a building, you know, up and running and stabilized um i- i- if it's a ground up development. But 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 we are also looking to to acquire properties that go on the market.
I think that's an important piece, um that housing preservation piece, because what we find is um oftentimes, you know, a unit is affordable. It may not be subsidized, but it's affordable. It's at a good area median income level for its residents. Um and then it goes first, goes on on the market and gets sold to someone, a developer who comes in, renovates them and and then increases the rents. So now we've just lost, you know, affordable housing in addition to what we already are behind. So that's something that we think is really important, especially in Littleton where we do have a diverse housing stock. We do have a lot of apartments right now. Um but it's not going to do us any good from an affordability standpoint if they're sold off and renovated and the the rents go way high.
So the the people in these fifty-nine properties may have to move to one interim property and then to in a development that may take two to four years to develop?
Potentially, and it's a two-year process um in transition um to begin with. So for example, if we found out tomorrow that the application is approved, that doesn't mean that folks are going to lose their housing. We have two years to transition phase, phase that, the new program in and um find find somewhere for those folks to to move. But the voucher that they receive allows them to go anywhere. So they don't have to stay in Littleton. They certainly, if they want to, they can and we'll help them um to do that. But if they, for whatever reason, want to go, some had do have family out of state, out of jurisdiction, they can take that voucher.
Is that Section Eight or something different?
Yes, housing choice voucher. It's it's similar.
Isn't that hard to use?
Um it's not as hard as people think, and there's actually a a law that was just passed in the state that um just landlords cannot discriminate uh against um housing choice voucher holders if that's their form of income. So that should actually make it easier for them to find places to live.
Thank you for my multiple question.
Sure.
Good. Thank you. Counsel, I don't see any more hands up. Uh I oh, Cap, okay, go ahead. Kelly?
Corey, um Corey, Yvonne, thank you so much for um the presentation tonight. And Corey, I appreciate you um describing uh the the term affordable housing and and um and what that term, what those two words can mean. Because I think there is kind of a perception out there about um what affordable housing means when it actually is very broad. So I appreciate that. I'm gonna play devil's advocate here. So with our census out there right now, hopefully people are filling out their census. Um I'm I'm I am I am confident that the city of Littleton will go over fifty thousand residents. We are no longer a small town. We are a city. We're gonna keep growing. If you go outside of the city of Littleton, you go south, you go east, you go north. The whole metro area is exploding and it's it is impacting us and it will impact us. With that in mind and with um what we were tasked with, with the comprehensive plan um in making sure that um there is diverse housing stock within the city of Littleton. The discussions going forward, say we decided to go against the comprehensive plan and not adopt some of these values and not adopt um some of these goals. What, how do you foresee the city of, what do you, how do you see foresee the city of Littleton twenty years from now, thirty years from now? What do you think our city will look like and who do you think will live here?
Well, I hate to keep going back to it, but it wouldn't be very diverse or inclusive at that point. Um if it my fear is that we end up with the younger families moving because they're looking to buy a home and they can't necessarily afford to buy one here. And then our older residents and seniors kind of fall in the same spot where they either can't afford it or um there aren't options for them to downsize. And those two demographics could could go away and it's, we're left with, you know, a a not not a very diverse group at that point. Just a high-earning, middle, you know, middle-aged, I guess, would be the best way to put it.
How would it impact our businesses?
I'm sorry?
How would it impact our businesses?
Well, I think it's always a concern with, again, being a a business owner, you know, trying to operate a business. That's always a concern with with employees and and finding good qualified employees that are willing to drive. I mean, we have folks that drive um pretty far right now and that doesn't tend to last long term. Um and it also impacts, you know, I mentioned traffic and and congestion. Um right now, I believe it's around seventy-four percent of folks are are commuting alone in a car um to work and that certainly doesn't help, you know, one of the co- complaints I hear the most about Littleton is the traffic. Um so if we don't have housing that's close by, that's not going to get any better. And it's just gonna continue to get worse and everyone's driving in and out all the time. Um if we don't take advantage of the light rail and transportation that's nearby. Um I think that's going to be a a huge struggle going forward. That's, again, we're not and who knows what's going to happen with automobiles, but it seems that Littleton's so dependent and that's not necessarily maybe the direction of of the world down the road, you know, way into the future. Hope that answered your questions. Yvonne, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh the only thing I would say is um uh the the probably most direct uh comparison uh Kelly to what you were asking is is Boulder. Um and and you you can see Boulder's a fairly small uh city, but at the same time, because a lot of their working um uh their workforce has to live outside of Boulder, their their traffic is 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 fairly uh it it's a fairly more congested city than than even Littleton is. And so uh in twenty years um we we may see Littleton looking a lot more like Boulder in that regard.
Okay, uh Councilmember Milliman, I know, or a Councilmember or a Pro Tem, you had your hand up next. Uh and and remind Counsel, if you will, use the hand icon so I can follow them in order.
Yeah, I did. I don't know what's going on with it. If Councilmember Milliman has a follow-up question, I can wait a second.
Uh go ahead, Kelly.
Just I I wanted to know, um can you speak to um
If you could, lean forward so we can hear you.
If you could, if you could speak to um the relationship between um homelessness homelessness and affordable housing. Um I will just share a quick story. There was a a lady I used to work with um whose uh family came on hard times due to um extenuating circumstances and they essentially became homeless. They um found um housing prices in um the metro area to be um outrageous and uh they, this poor family essentially became homeless. And it's just, it's it's heartbreaking because I think it's, there's more of a a connection between those two than a a lot of people want to um w- want to recognize. And I will say right now, during this whole COVID crisis, I don't know if you guys have heard in the news, but in the next month or so, um there's gonna be a pretty large percentage of evictions in the larger metro areas around around the country. And that's just terrifying. So anyway, that's my question.
Yeah, right now we're in, we're kind of in the homeless prevention business. You know, that's, we don't have housing that directly addresses folks who are homeless currently. Um that would be more of a permanent supportive housing type of property of a development um full of services to help with whatever needs they have. But um right now, that's why it's so important and so it's why the housing preservation is so important as well. Um so we don't lose those units that, you know, those are, those are folks that are prime that if they're in an affordable unit right now and rents go up, they don't have to go up a lot sometimes and they get put in that position where they they potentially would be homeless.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. The first is, I want to give my perspective on how the effort to meet uh the housing needs identified by the BBC consultants serves not only the existing but the future Littleton. Um we know that uh one of the needs identified is downsized housing for seniors. Uh one of the things that to my mind makes Littleton a pretty extraordinary community is that it's very often intergenerational and my family is a perfect example of this. My parents are uh nearing their mid-seventies and they live in a three-story, single-family home that they're not gonna be able to maintain forever. There's not uh an available stock of downsized housing. They're gonna have to leave the community that's been their home since, in my mother's case, the nineteen fifties. And uh I just don't see that as the future Littleton that we want, right? An intergenerational community uh to my mind is is um almost a sacred uh thing to have achieved. And I want to make sure that uh we protect that going forward. Uh when it comes to uh starter homes for young families, uh the superintendent uh of LPS has already identified a lack of pupil enrollment because of declining numbers of children in our area is a major uh future um challenge for the school school district, uh given current state funding models. If we can't attract children to Littleton Public Schools, we lose huge chunks of funding on top of the already uh humongous uh funding challenges that the district is facing. We all know what a crown jewel Littleton Public Schools is, and I think uh doing anything um to jeopardize it going forward would be a monumental error, right? If we can't attract young families because housing has become far too uh expensive to be attainable uh and as a result, we don't have enough children, uh that's a problem uh for a school district and for certainly of the character of our community. I mean, um w- you know, we want uh we want uh certainly a a healthy number of young families in the community. Um when it comes to affordable housing, right, which is another uh another need this identifies, is an opportunity for our community to live out uh its stated value uh of inclusivity uh and and uh to to um you know, instantiate this idea that diversity is an inherent value, which I believe that it is. I don't think that uh a future uh Littleton, you know, that's full of uh just rich white people is um is is going to be as rich a sort of human mosaic and experience as we would like for our contin- our community to continue being, right? We achieve that through through diversity. Um you know, I suppose I would add, just to be quite frank, that uh for some reason that eludes me uh affordable housing for a lot of people has become a four-letter word. And I think that uh it's because it's associated with some unsavory stereotypes. And as a nation, we're reckoning with some of that right now. I think it's a good opportunity for us to continue doing that, right? Uh folks who live in affordable housing are are people. They work. They have kids. They live lives. They have thoughts. They're not people to be um pushed at arm's length. And I don't think that Littleton uh feels that way. I think that uh we've said, uh we've stated honestly that we want to be an inclusive community. We want to be an inclusive community. And I think we strive for that through our housing policies. Um one thing uh that um is missing for me, from the information that's been presented, is um the task force's idea uh on the menu of strategies to uh actually achieve the housing goals that are identified or the housing needs that are identified by the uh by the BBC consultants. And, you know, Corey was very generous with his time last week. He and I have talked about this. Um, you know, as a council member, I really need to hear from the folks involved, not just with the Housing Task Force, but with uh, you know, whatever your perspective is on on achieving these these housing goals, you know, we need to know what the options are to practically achieve that. It's a difficult puzzle to assemble. Um we have a lot of policy goals that we need to meet going forward in Littleton, and I really need to hear, how do we actually do this? It's a, it's a very difficult question and I need an answer to it from uh not just the task force, but certainly they're gonna be involved in it. So uh those are my comments. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Counsel, I don't see any other hands up but my own. I I do have a question. I want a a clarification. So you said that the fifty-nine homes you'll be selling, you're gonna work that through the Habitat for Humanity? Was that what I heard you say, which is a good thing? So that'll encumber the property so that it'll stay within some reasonable range, hopefully?
That that is correct. Um so Habitat for Humanity will, we will not be sell selling any homes directly to Habitat for Humanity, at least as our plans are are today. Uh we will sell the homes directly to purchasers and Habitat for Humanity will mortgage those homes. And in the mortgage, uh you know, there there will be a deed restriction uh that essentially will ensure affordability for the long term. Um and and so what what that means is that uh we will have homes that, you know, uh LPS teachers, uh firemen, policemen, uh employees of the city, employees of the housing authority, employees of nonprofits uh can can afford um, you know, for for the long term, especially as as LPS and and other entities that are important to the community are looking to recruit um uh, you know, first, second, third-year uh teachers, things like that, uh first, second, third-year um uh, you know, cadets for for the police department. Um I I hope that
Yeah, yeah, it does. Thank you for clarifying that very much. Uh that our relationship between the housing authority and Littleton has always been a very good one. It they, you guys have always done a great job uh and continue to do a great job. I know at Geneva Village, you managed that for many years. Uh and 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 maybe a lot of people out there listening don't are unaware that you're managing it today. Um that I I think it it came down to a a matter of uh manpower and and how much a management fee was being received for that property because the rents are so low there. Um uh but I appreciate everything you guys have done. So, yeah, that's a challenge for the the city too on how how that property is right now. Um but uh thank you for everything you you have done, Corey, Yvonne. Thank you very much. Counsel, if we have nothing else, uh we'll move on. So thank you very much for coming in and or coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you. Uh Counsel, we'll move on to our last item, uh which is one B. which is one B, ID 20-177. The council will be debriefed on policing in the modern air telephone town hall that we had, was it just last week? City manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So hopefully Counsel had an opportunity to kind of listen in. It was last Wednesday, July 15th. Chief Stevens was there along with a couple of deputy chiefs to kind of respond to some questions. We updated the packet here for the council and the public to give you an idea of how many calls we had. And let me just hit kind of some of the general numbers here. So we've used this system in the past. I think this is our fourth attempt here at Telephone Town Hall. And it seems like each time we use it, we get more and more callers that respond to this system. I think in particular here, we had almost 10,000 calls that went out as part of the system to alert people for participation. We had nearly 600 people participate in the Telephone Town Hall itself. I think what was most notable is that we had nearly 100 people that stayed on for almost the entire session. And based on our past experience, I would say that's pretty noteworthy. We also had over 700 people just kind of watch this thing as part of Facebook. And we don't necessarily manage that as for participation. But again, I think those numbers are the highest we've ever seen for a Telephone Town Hall. I think, you know, one of the reasons that we went ahead and did this, obviously, is that we've had a lot of questions come to the council and to my office here after the George Floyd incident. And so we looked at this as an opportunity for Chief Stevens and his staff to kind of get out and listen and have an opportunity for the public to engage our police department. And in my view, I thought it was pretty successful. I've, the amount of people that we had engaged was, again, the highest I've ever seen. So I think with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Stevens and he's prepared to kind of share a little bit about what, the summary of the meeting itself and some of his takeaways and kind of what he learned from this. So with that, Chief Stevens?
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, Counsel. Thanks for having me join you guys tonight. Give you a little bit of a follow-up on the town hall, Telephone Town Hall. I, I agree with Mark. I thought it was a, a very successful event. We had some great questions, a lot of different callers presenting a variety of things, everything from questions on how we do for, use of force to training for our officers. There are several folks who expressed support for the Littleton Police Department, which we always like to hear. And some other folks that didn't live in Littleton, which was kind of fun too. But I thought it was a very good event and we're, we're happy to do it. It was, it went very quickly in my opinion. And you know me, I like to talk. So it worked out pretty good. I know there might be some follow-up questions or some questions that other council members that weren't there may have wanted to ask, or maybe some questions you're getting from some of your constituents. Some of the things that we talked about on the Telephone Town Hall that I wanted to kind of follow up with you are to help increase our transparency at the Littleton Police Department, we are going to utilize our technology, our existing technology to be able to allow us to provide links to our policy manual. And I know we eat a lot of, we get, not a lot, but we get questions pretty regularly on different policies that we have. And, and this way folks will just be able to go to the Littleton Gov website, the police page, and, and click on a link. It'll take them right to our policy manual to be able to see all of our policies, which I think will be helpful. And then For Collins PD has a, a good thing that they call the transparency page. I'll see if I can show you folks kind of what they have. But I don't think I'm going to be able to do it because it'll, it'll be too confusing. But anyway, I was looking at different things that we could do to put like a, a hub for all the different things that people ask us for, like what is our training on, on this or that? What is our policy on this or that? What is our philosophy on different things? And For Collins PD has a, what they call a transparency section on their webpage, which links to a number of different things, everything from ethics and law enforcement to statistics, annual statistics and analysis on different things. So that's something that we're going to be exploring as well and, and get some of these annual analysis that we do as part of our CLIA accreditation out there for the community to see. And I think that will help increase confidence and transparency in our organization and allow that direct access for anybody who would like to see it. So that, and on the links to the, the policy manual, we should have that up and running within the next couple of weeks. And so we'll get with Kelly and her folks to, to get a push out to the community so that they know that that's live and that they can go and, and check out these, the different policies that we have for CLIA accreditation and for our, just our regular operations. So with that, I'd like to open it up to questions to Counsel and, and see, you know, what you guys have.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief. Mayor Pro Tem and I were able to attend the event in person. It was, and it was, it was really cool to see how it all comes together and the city staff that's there to, to make sure that this, these questions came in. One of the things that you had touched on at, during the town hall, didn't elaborate a whole lot, was on the relationship that our, our police force have with, was it Little, was it All Health? Could, could you maybe just elaborate a little bit on that for us?
Absolutely. So one of the big pushes nationally with law enforcement is to try to minimize the amount of non-traditional police work that police agencies are involved in. And, you know, mental health crises type calls are a big percentage of what police agencies all over the country have become involved in. And so private-public partnerships are, are really being pushed in, in many locations to try to reduce the traditional law enforcement role. Littleton Police Department has, for the last couple of years, had a partnership already in place with All Health Network. We call it the Co-Responder Program. What that means, what that program is, is we have licensed clinical professionals from All Health that will actually ride along with our officers. They're with us 40 hours a week. And they actually respond to calls with us where the nature of the call indicates that someone may be having a mental health crisis that those professionals will be able to help us with. There's a couple of benefits to that, obviously, right off the bat. Number one is that we have immediate access to, you know, a clinical professional who can help us assess situations. They, they help us de-escalate sometimes off, very often highly emotional situations just by their presence and, and the ability that they can talk with someone and offer services that traditional law enforcement doesn't really have the opportunity to provide. But also, we have always had an ability in the law enforcement in Littleton to refer individuals that we've talked to. So even before the Co-Responder Program, and at the times when we don't have an actual co-responder riding with us, officers will go on many of these calls and, and we will refer every call of a mental health, related call to All Health Network. The follow-up takes a couple of days on that sometimes. By having the All Health Network folks with us, having that immediate access is great. And then they have just a whole litany of, of access to resources that law enforcement doesn't have, longer-term resources for, for folks who are suffering in these crises. And so that's a better, longer-term problem-solving solution. And we're very, we're very proud of that program. We think it's very successful. And we really enjoy that partnership. And we, we found that it's been very helpful for many individuals in the Littleton community.
Great. Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Chief Stevens, for being here tonight and for, for what you did at the town hall, I thought was, was wonderful. So, so thank you. Chief Stevens knows that when I was at National League of Cities, I attended a breakout session on first responder, post-traumatic stress disorder, statistics around that are far too high. And not just that, but other bad health outcomes for, for police and, and fire and ambulance and so on. And I, I wanted to take this opportunity just to follow up, Chief, and so to get a better sense of, of what Counsel and the community is doing to support our, our police officers and, you know, what we could do to, to further support them. So that, that's my first question. And then my, my second question is this, that, you know, it seems like nationally, for some reason, there seems to be this insistence from different quarters that you, you sort of choose sides, either you're for the police or you're for the anti-racism movement. And I, I just see that as a very false choice. And I think a lot of the reason I see it as a false choice is because of my experience with, with the Littleton Police, right? I see policing as a core city service, as if, as a necessary service, just all the way down. And, and, you know, policing is something that communities do well or they do, do less well. And in Littleton, I think we do it in an excellent manner. I've said that before. I gotta keep saying it because I think it's true. But that's not happenstance, right? It's because the community has been proactive, right? We've said, okay, how can we sort of lead the pack here, right? How can we enhance our professionalism? How can we enhance our, our transparency and our accountability? So I don't have any agenda in asking this question. I promise I'm asking out of sheer curiosity because we've said there's always room for improvement. What would it mean for Littleton Police to have citizen oversight for good and for ill? And when I brought this question up with the city manager at the, at the study session yesterday, or excuse me, at the agenda meeting yesterday, he made a good point that, okay, well, what problem are we trying to solve? And I said, I don't think we're trying to solve the problem. I, I just wonder if it's another opportunity to continue being proactive and, and continue sort of being out in front. And so those are my two questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'll start with the first one on the trauma, I guess is a, is the right term, that first responders can experience through cumulative trauma and vicarious trauma, based on the things that they see and experience. Lately, obviously with, with COVID, it's been very challenging because, you know, our officers don't have the option to, to, you know, remote work, you know, for the most part. They're first responders. They're out there. They're out there at the very beginning of this thing when not much was known. And then they're out there now. And every day, just like firefighters and paramedics and nurses and, and doctors and all those folks. So that was pretty stressful to begin with in Raines. And then you add on the national picture right now for law enforcement, which is incredibly stressful for, for law enforcement, even in a wonderful community like Littleton where our officers are, have tremendous support, you know, from the community. And the community is not shy about showing that support to us, which we're very thankful for. So, you know, law enforcement in general, without these, these unique situations is, is, is like other professions, but very stressful. So we've, we've been very cognizant of the, the stress that, that all of our personnel, sworn and non-s sworn are under in, in general. Plus you add on these latest things. So we have a very robust support program and wellness program within our organization to help alleviate and mitigate some of those issues, including peer support programs. We have, police chaplains are very helpful and beneficial for our folks. We have employee assistance programs available through the city Littleton HR. And but most, I think most unique is we, within the last couple of years, we've actually contracted with a, a police psychologist and police psychologist company. And they, and then we offer services anonymously to our personnel and to help support them and get them the counseling. And I think that one of the great things that we've seen in our professional over the last couple of years that help, help our officers tremendously because suicide in police work is, is a, is a really serious problem and it's a serious issue. And anything we can do to support our personnel, you know, will do. But the one thing that's been great in our professional last couple of years is the stigma, the stigma that's gone with seeking counseling has, has been greatly reduced. So through a culture that's supported by our city council and our community, that supports our organization both financially and then, you know, with, with expressing support to us, it allows us to, to provide these services and, and alleviate some of that stress and pressure and helps our officers remain more well-balanced in their lives. And that's without a doubt very helpful. The second part of your question is addressing, you know, civilian oversight. And I guess my answer to that question is, you know, it's, it's a kind of a complicated issue. And civilian oversight's a very broad term, right? So there could be a lot of different things there that we'd be talking about. Littleton Police Department's always been a very transparent agency through, you know, accreditation and in our work with the community. We welcome folks. We have to look at our, our operations and participate with us. There's formal oversight, you know, and some, some jurisdictions have, you know, formal boards that have authority over certain things within a police work. And then there's also less authoritative oversights or, or partnership, I would call it, where we would have, you could have things like citizen advisory boards or advisory panels or, or things like that. I think the Littleton community decides what they want for their law enforcement and over their police department or with their police departments. And, you know, we're open and willing to work with whatever the community expects from us and wants from us. I think right now that there's not been a call and, and our necessity, as you expressed, Mayor Pro Tem, for more formal oversight in Littleton. But I think there's always an opportunity for us to enhance our, our cooperation and our, our partnership with the community by engaging in more, I guess, frequent or meaningful partnerships when it comes to things like policy development or even accommodations. We do include community members on a lot of our different types of internal processes that we do, whether it was when we rewrote our entire discipline policy. We had community members involved in that committee. We've, we use community, uh, community members on our interview panels for promotions and, and assignments in certain areas of our organization. So we try to involve the community in a lot of different things like that. So I guess, you know, to sum it up or to, to finish this part of the question up, but, you know, we, we welcome whatever the community is expecting from us. We'll work in partnership with the community. And I think there's a lot of different opportunities there for variety and, and a whole range of options for community involvement in the police department operations.
Thanks, Chief. I, I like calling it partnership. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Counselmember Grove.
Chief Stevens, was there anything else that you took away from the meeting that may change a policy like the idea of this website for transparency? Were there anything else that you might do in the future differently because of this meeting?
You know, I can't say specifically from the meeting, but I can tell you from, and I, I think I touched on it briefly during the Telephone Town Hall. Just, you know, the, the, one of the positives I think that's coming out of this whole situation, which has unfortunately a whole lot of negatives, obviously. But one of the positive things that we can look at is it's, it's compelling not just us, but all law enforcement to truly look at your internal practices and, and your partnerships and, and what you have work going on on a regular basis. And, and as part of this transparency enhancement by publishing our policy manual, we're going through our policy manual yet again, which we do fairly frequently, but just want to make sure that our policies and procedures are contemporary, they're up to date. Obviously accreditation helps us do that on a general basis, but this is more specific. And we want to make sure that we're doing things and are reflected on our policies and procedures that are, like I said, the best practices, they're timely, and they make sense, you know, and they're contemporary. And we want to make sure also as we're looking at these policies, we revise them to reflect contemporary community expectations, you know. So we need to make sure that, and we already do have a lot of words in there like de-escalation, a lot of concepts that are very, you know, hear them on the media a lot right now. We want to make sure that we're incorporating all those things that we're hearing, things that the community expects and that we're, we're integrating those in, into our policies right now. And I think that this has allowed us to, to do a more in-depth review. And sometimes some of those things get put on the back burner and this pushes it right up to the front, which is, which is a good thing.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselmember Milliman.
Thank you so much for that town hall. It was super insightful, super helpful. I learned a lot. I thought it was great. Thank you so much. But I do have two questions. One is, so how, how are you attracting like 795 views on Facebook and we're not really that close for our meetings?
Well, you know, I said-
What are you doing that we, we're not doing?
Well, it's a Telephone Town Hall and I have a face for radio. So I think that's probably what happened. Yeah, I think it was the proactive outreach, to be honest with you. I think that the proactive calls from Communications Department, when they did that outreach, I think a lot of people were curious and stayed on the line. I think that was helpful.
Yeah, no, it was great. They did a great job. They really did. Thank you for, thank you for that town hall. And just one other kind of soft question. I know you were talking about the mental health of the police officers. And I know you have the canine dogs that have their specific- And I know you have the canine dogs that have their specific roles and their specific jobs. But could the police department use like therapy dog to help? You see, therapy dog made you smile. We've, we've got three of them at Children's Hospital and I'm telling you, those dogs are not there, they're there for the patients, but they really do provide more happiness and a sense of centering for the staff.
No, I agree. We love those dogs and, and it's funny you should mention that because, you know, I've thought about that before. It would be nice to have some, you know, cute little lab running around here too, you know, and those are always great. One of our sergeants, I won't name him because he'll probably be embarrassed, but he's got some land he bought down in Elbert County and he, you know, his whole, his whole goal is to, to raise alpacas, I believe it is. But I always tease him and I call him Emus. I said, when are we going to see one of those Emus in here walking through the station as one of our therapy animals? And so it'd be, it'd be kind of cool to see that walking down the hallway. But yeah, I think the therapy dogs are great. You know, obviously logistically that poses some challenges for us, but you know, I, I think that they're wonderful. It's interesting, some of our officers, even with our two existing canines, you wouldn't believe that, that the change that comes over those officers when we have our canines in the station and they're, they're playing with those dogs and they have chew toys and they're running down the hall. It's just, it's pretty cool to watch the, the changes that come over folks and, and just the pressure that's relieved, you know, around animals. And I think that, that's pretty cool. And we would support that and, and so I think that's a good idea.
Okay. I'll keep that in mind.
City manager.
Yeah. I think Reed's got a picture of a, a cute little service animal in training.
Don't encourage him.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Well, one of the things I just wanted to comment on, and this was a conversation the chief and I had actually before COVID. And we were looking for an opportunity to put together kind of an annual report, basically a series of statistics that we could share with the council. You know, probably prior to the budget season, just to kind of hopefully show the council and the community kind of our level of success. And the more I think about it, the more I see a little how important that is, especially in the climate we're in right now. And as an example, the All Health Network, if we could come up with some ways to kind of understand how often are they engaged? And how often should they be engaged? You know, I think that would be an interesting kind of measure for the council to decide, you know, from a budget perspective, are we really hitting the target? So I think the chief and I are probably going to explore that in more detail here in the coming months. And hopefully we could formalize something here for certainly next year.
Excellent. Mayor Protem.
Chief, do, do you mind just plugging for the Citizen Academy real quick for anyone who might be watching who's not familiar with it? I just think this is such a, such a useful and, and unique experience. And I, and I think you know, so, so much of what makes a, a, a law enforcement successful and successful for its community is that just e- e- exchange between the community and law enforcement, that community policing standard. And I think the more people in Littleton who can go through this, probably the better. So do you mind just telling a little bit about it?
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. We, the Littleton Police Department runs a Citizens Academy, usually two, two times a year in the spring and fall. And it's a 10-week program. You come once a week for a couple of hours a night. And we, you get to basically go through a mini police academy and get to have an in-depth and in-person experience with what our officers and our, and our non-swept personnel do all the time, just to operate our police department and work in partnership. Really a great program that allows folks to, to be very thoroughly educated on what law enforcement is and what it is in the Littleton community. And we get tremendously positive feedback from attendees. I know council members have been through in the past and, and I found it very interesting and so we post that on our website on when we would be running the academies, usually in the spring and fall. Right now they're suspended due to the COVID restrictions and the pandemic, but we can't wait to get back to running our police, uh, citizens academies. Usually graduates from the Citizens Academy are recruited to, to be longer-term volunteers with our organization through the Littleton Police Citizens Academy Alumni Association. Those folks, I think I talked about it at the town hall, have dedicated over 7,000 hours of volunteer time to our community just last year alone with the police department. So, and they have every opportunity to, to do everything from help us with clerical work. We actually have the Citizens Academy graduates and LPC AAA alumni who are part of our CSV program, which is a community safety volunteer. And they actually patrol the neighborhoods and do things like business checks and home checks to help us with traffic accidents on, on a traffic direction. And they do a number of different things out there on patrol and they love it. And they like it so much that they form their own bike unit. So they're out on, they're actually out on the, on the trails and, and, you know, when we're have them operating. They too have been kind of benched for a while because of the pandemic, but starting to get them back out there now. But yeah, they, they're great. And the Citizens Academy is a wonderful opportunity. And we encourage folks to, to come join us.
Good, good. Counsel, any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Chief, for your time and congratulations on such a successful town hall.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
All right. Great. Thank you. I'll turn it over to, we'll go down to our updates from the city manager.
Actually, I have no further updates, Mayor.
That works. And dare I ask the city manager?
Nothing from the city attorney's office.
A city, a city attorney, sorry. Great. Counsel, if we have nothing else to discuss, oh, Mayor Protem.
I, I think Judge Feldman's on. Wasn't there something we talked about the agenda, meaning he was going to talk about something or give an update about something or?
Oh, I, let's give him the opportunity though. Judge? Go ahead, Scott.
And I think Dan, Danielle Trujillo, the court administrator is on as well.
Yes. Yeah. Good call. Good call. All right. If we could hear from the both of them.
Okay. Am I unmuted? I think I am.
I hear you, Judge.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. And I'm just going to give a, a very quick update and then have Danielle chat about something. I think the, the all health issue, just to give you a quick update on how everything's fitting in with the court. I, I just want to say again that thank you to the city council and city staff for all of the support in this very, very difficult time. We've had to make a lot of accommodations and we've got nothing but great support in how we're able to deal with this. Had to make a lot of technological changes. And, and I also like to thank Reed, especially because he's restructured the prosecution function. So it's, it's very efficient and very, very fair, very professional. And so I, I couldn't be happier about that. And as always, it's, it's still great to be working with the Littleton Police Department. I get nothing but compliments. If I get comments at all, oh, I get one or two grumps. But, but mainly we get a lot of compliments and and, and I think it, it just shows that that the culture of the Littleton Police Department is, is one of kindness and empathy, but still accountability for, for people. I think the culture is that those things are not mutually exclusive. And I think that they've been very helpful in how we deal with our homeless population as it relates to the court. In fact, we, we're, we don't have to see a lot of those folks because the police department being right there on the first line makes the appropriate responses. With that, I will turn it over to Danielle.
Yeah, thanks, Judge.
Thanks, Judge Feldman. Um, what we really just wanted to highlight is that we took a page out of Chief Stevens playbook and knowing that his partnership was so successful with All Health, um, that we continued that partnership into the courthouse. And so immediately a year ago, Judge Feldman and I met with All Health to figure out how we could elaborate on the partnership and utilize it in the courthouse. So that way we were providing services to those same citizens or defendants that needed the services that they were able to provide. And so ultimately what we've seen is that our partnership has been utilized in a very positive fashion and we're meeting people where they're at. And that's kind of our biggest achievement or one of the things that we pride ourselves on doing is making sure that we're meeting our citizens or our defendants where they're at and helping them to make sure that they can re-acclimate or that they're able to come back and kind of provide that restorative justice process to those victims and making sure that the community is made whole again. So that was kind of one of the things that we wanted to talk about tonight was just that we've elaborated on that into the courthouse and that it's a continued progress and that our partnership with All Health has been beneficial too.
Thank you, Danielle. And then, and for either one of you, for the judge or Danielle, the, the courts are, are we up and running fully at this point?
Um, almost full-time. We're actually holding hearings three times a week. And so we're having defendants come in. If they're on the docket, then they're allowed to walk into the building or we're also providing phone and video service. So that way people aren't required to come into the courthouse. They can choose how they'd like to be seen.
And it, great. And I think the city manager has a, a comment.
My apologies to Judge Feldman and Daniel Trujillo. I asked them to be here and then I promptly forgot to introduce. My apologies. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Yes. All right. Counsel, any questions for the judge or Danielle? Great. Well, thank you very much for both of you hanging in there to, to the end of our meeting. Thank you very, very much. All right. And you have a good evening. All right. So nothing from the city manager, nothing from the city attorney and if counsel, if you have nothing, then it is, it is eight twenty T seven and we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night.